Good evening and welcome to the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of Finley City Council. We will start this evening's meeting with the roll call followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Ms. Frishy?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Neimeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Slough?
Here.
Ms. Warnakee? And Mr. Wobser?
Present.
Ms. Warnakee contacted me a couple of weeks ago, said she wouldn't be at this evening's meeting. I would entertain a motion to excuse. Mr. Russell?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Greeno, all those in favor of excusing Ms. Warnakee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. She is excused. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes of Finley City Council. Mr. Slough?
I move to have the minutes approved and circulated.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The minutes are approved. Mr. Russell, do we have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda?
Yes, we have one removal, the letter from Pat Zadowski concerning the Port Authority, we're removing that from the agenda, I make that as a motion.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. It is approved. We have no proclamations, recognition, or retirement resolutions, petitions. We do have four citizens here to speak against the Carlin Street slash Habitat, and under the rules of council, three are allowed on that side, I would need a motion to approve the fourth. Mr. Russell?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Baumann, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That extra one is approved. With that in mind, we're going to start with Police Chief Mathias, he's got something he'd like to update us on, and then we'll go into the other discussions.
Good evening, folks. Here to update on the body worn camera system. We put the system into place, it's the Axon body worn cameras, we put it into place on day shift, Monday, August fourteenth, since that time we've had thirty-five days of use, in which we've had fifty-nine officers, detectives, sergeants, and/or lieutenants have been using this system to submit evidence. Of that, we've had three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six individual body worn videos uploaded to evidence.com by the members of our department. Five hundred and fifteen photos and/or videos have been uploaded to evidence.com used in evidence or Axon capture. And with that, we've had over two hundred photos and/or videos that have been uploaded through seventy-eight uses from third-party requests from the community or businesses and that through our evidence.com. We've used a total of one point nine terabytes of storage. Twenty-eight videos have been shared with partner agencies such as the County Prosecutor's Law Director's Office, Children's Services Bureau through six record requests. We've also had twenty-two body worn cameras, videos shared with individuals through seven different public records requests. With that twenty-two videos, it's taken approximately forty-two hours worth of time from Sergeant Walters to complete the redaction of those twenty-two videos. So that was something, that was kind of an unknown going into it, but it all goes into how long each video lasts as well. The sergeants on the back end have reviewed up to twenty-five videos from the officers that have submitted their performance, which is only about zero point six percent of all videos, which is in accordance with our policy. There's been three that were noted as great performance reviews, three that were noted for minor concerns such as activations or tagging of their videos, and nineteen of them had no concerns that were identified. The performance review goal for this period was fifteen videos, so we surpassed that by having the twenty-five videos done. Overall, it's been relatively smooth, we had minor complications once we got the system up and running, but the only thing that we have noticed that we needed to purchase was our signal sidearm devices and a charging, an extra charging bay dock and that for the department, those are in the works. We've also learned about the redaction process, like I mentioned before, that it's taken a little bit more time. That was something that we initially didn't put in the body worn camera grant, but it's something that we can, are eligible for, for this year coming up for the twenty-four grant, so something that we're looking forward since it is a newly created position with the sergeant. No other major issues that came up, the only minor support issues that we have with Axon, they've answered our questions very quickly and no issues there, we're very glad of the support that we have, it's twenty-four-seven, so it's something that we've had during the workday, weekends, holidays, and everything else, so very pleased with the company and we look forward to continued use throughout the program.
Any questions or comments for the chief? Mr. Russell?
Two questions for you, so you said the one sergeant had spent forty-two hours doing the redaction, so in one month he spent a week of time, and the expectation is he will get better at this, so that that ability will go down, or are we looking at a quarter of his, of a quarter of a person's time doing nothing but public records requests?
It will, it'll take a significant amount of his time, a lot of it is learning the system and getting proficient with it, learning the tricks and the trades, but depends on what all has to be redacted, some involves juveniles, some involves other people that have to be blurred out, screens, so he'll get better with it, but it's something that we had to look at to see what we needed for personnel, so it's definitely going to be well-used of his time and we may have to, we're training others on the back end when he's not available or on vacation as well, but it's something that we definitely have to look at and probably budgeted for as well.
Has the rank and file noticed any difference in either the way they approach their policing or the way the general public reacts to policing knowing that the camera is running?
I think it's perceived quite well, people are asking about the cameras, I mean, some obviously know about the cameras being in use, but there is some questions. During our training, it was stressed upon professionalism, integrity, some of the fine goals that we have with our members of our department, and I think some of the reviews show that for their performance, how they're speaking with the public, how they're interacting, de-escalating some of the situations, we're reviewing all the uses of force, we've had several pursuits that either been around town or that happened in town, so it's something that, we've gotten a lot of good feedback from all of our personnel and stuff, and I think the public is glad that we have them as well and stuff, and it's very positive thing for the whole city.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Frishy?
I think you're right, spot on, I think it's great for our guys, I think it's great for the community, I just wanted to say, I think it's amazing how well they are working and quickly to get that stuff redacted and out. I know somebody who made a request of an incident that happened over a weekend, and I think they had it by Monday morning, which I'm like, no way, I thought for sure, I'm like, you're gonna have to wait a week or so, so whether it's forty hours for a month or not, the turnaround in the customer service there, that's fantastic.
It just, again, it just depends on the length of time, so.
Sure.
It'll get, it'll get better as we move along.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you, chief. You're welcome to stick around, but I think all of us would like you to get back to work.
Sounds good, thanks, sir.
All right, so moving on, oral communications, we have four from the, concerning the Carlin project, first is Kim Mador, is that how you put, Meter, I'm sorry.
Everybody says the wrong name.
Make sure the red, red light's on, on the.
I live in West Park, I'm in a private subdivision on the corner of Carlin and Jessica Drive. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself because I have been homeless. We lost everything we had in a flood here in Finley, and we did everything right, my husband and I both work, we've worked most of our, I've worked fifty years, and I've just recently retired. We had flood insurance, but we were told we made too much money to get any help, and like most of us, we had to borrow the money to get out of trouble. So what we did is we had two mortgages, and for eighteen months we struggled paying two mortgages on a house we were building in the West Park area, and one that have a higher house, we could not do anything to. It took us a total of eighteen months to get out of this situation. Why we chose the West Park area? So we could be closer to my husband's family, friends, our jobs, we're both on that side of town, and I like to fish at Oakwood. I'm not against Habitat building homes, I've helped build homes, I just don't think we need any more in the West Park area. There's already twenty-four, and they just finished building four just this year. I personally am against the waste of tax dollar funded money being used to fund their project. At the ad hoc meeting, the mayor suggested that the city become land contractors on the building of the inner structure on Carlin. Yeah, that includes water, sewer lines, electric, which all in the area has to go underground, and don't forget curves, roads, sidewalk. Even at the planning zoning revisions, the lot sizes and the building per acre to four to six homes, that would look like it would be accommodating to the Habitat single-family homes. And let's not forget, there's going to be a retention pond. My question is, who's going to be taking care of all this? Is this going to be a city side subdivision or a private subdivision? And let's not forget, we've got snow removal there, where's all this going to go? Then they discussed the auctioning off of parcels, is this going to be a market rate or capped rate? Will it be open to the public, or is it going to be open to other contractors or just Habitat beneficiaries? This part didn't sound quite right to me, so I contacted the State Attorney General's office. Oops, pages sticking together. For some information, and they directed me to all the Sunshine laws. Then it questioned me, and then again I had to go to the Ethics Office of Ohio, then they told me to submit my questions, and I did. Two questions popped up, the one about the city using taxpayer money funds to build infrastructure for a nonprofit, and how that we're going to auction off the land, and another one while I was canvassing my neighborhood about a sitting councilman that works for a district house director for a state representative, and how projects that were being asked for grant money. And everybody kept asking, is this going to be seen as a conflict of interest? I said, I don't know, we'll find out, haven't got an answer back on either. Our subdivision where I live is going to be directly across the street from me, and there's been so many dealings going on with the city mission and the Ohio Habitat Homes, it scares me because they just received twenty-five million, and they could just write out, purchase the land themselves. And that's more tax money that my great grandchildren will be paying for. So if this happens, what's going to, what's going to, what's going to become of that land? And if that's freed up, will the city be able to fix some of the problems and issues that are happening in the flooding in my subdivision, let alone all through the city down in West Park? My problem is, the subdivision sits directly across from where this project will be taking place, we are private, we take care of our own roads, green space, lighting, and we do this with each homeowner paying dues. If this project is completed.
I'd make the motion to extend our time.
Second, Mr. Greeno, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we let you speak, yep, keep going.
If the project is completed, are you going to help us with our roads due to the influx of traffic? And I know you're not. So if the dues keeps rising, and our taxes we know will probably go up too, our retirement homes, which we've all worked very hard for, we end up having to sell us, to sell them all, so that kills our dreams of homeownership till the day we die. So I'm asking you to think long and hard on the decisions you make, because I think you need to fix the problems we already have before adder any interfraction systems that we all now have, and I thank you for listening to me.
Wait, right there, is there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, I'd rather that not happen, but we're going to allow it. Next is Wayne Bradigan, Wayne also would like to speak about West Park and the flooding and the green space.
Hello, I'm Wayne Bradigan, and I'm here to talk about green space and flooding. I've been a contractor for over sixty-three years, built two churches, a log cabin, many homes, garages, and sheds, most of the homes I've built are in the West Park area. I purchased land in West Park in nineteen fifty-eight and lived in West Park for over sixty-three years. I'm familiar with a lot of the issues West Park has and has had over the years. When the I-75 ramp was being done, revamp was being done, we had a large flood in West Park because they blocked up the drainage that was our only way to get rid of our surface water in West Park. I have pictures of that flood, if you care to see them, they have been passed out, I We have had some improvements then, but there's still much to do to better the situation. When a few, when a new business wants to build a lot, or build on a lot or parcel of land in the city, it makes them put in a pond or some other means of holding or eliminating surface water to help flood control. We already have problems with flooding in different parts of our neighborhood, residents' homes get water in their yards with some heavy rains, and the streets get standing water on them. Because of the rock being so close to the surface, there isn't much dirt to soak up the water, so it just lays on top of the rock, it isn't being absorbed into the soil because it gets saturated and can't hold anymore. We have very few streets that have storm sewers to carry away the water, with the loss of more green space, we just compound the problem. If every one of the sixty-eight homes they want to build on the twenty-six acres of land averages twelve hundred square feet, and the driveway is about six hundred square feet, that equals approximately six thousand square feet of soil that it is absorbing any water. You can have, you can have, and you, then you have to add to that total, the square foot of all the streets that are paved, this is green space loss for water absorption. Give me a plot with all the street sizes, the square foot of each home, and I'll tell you how much green space you're losing. One acre of land has forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in it, you multiply that times twenty-six acres, you end up with one million one hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, total area to build on. If each of these sixty-eight homes is twelve thousand square feet, that equals eighty-one thousand square feet, if each drive averages six hundred square feet, that's another forty thousand eight hundred square feet, that makes a total one hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet for just the homes. Then add on the paved streets to that total, along with the community center they want to build, added to that total also, if you convert all these numbers into the acres, you are losing about eleven acres or forty-four percent, it's probably more like fifty to fifty-five, because I don't know what that community center's going to look like, or how much the pond's supposed to take, but we're losing in the area fifty percent of that green space. I haven't seen the numbers on the streets or the community centers, so it's just a guess for that total. If they want to put these twenty-six homes in West Park, we're going to lose all that green space. Just one more bit of information, one cubic foot of space will hold seven point four gallons of water. I don't know what the size of that pond would take to handle that area, but I can do the research and find that out. The city will be compounding the problem that already exists in West Park if these homes are built in West Park, fix the problems we already have before adding to the infrastructure that we now live with. Thank you for letting me speak.
Questions for Wayne? Ms. Frishy? I didn't know that you were a numbers guy, so hopefully you're right on all that, because my question is going to be more towards Jeremy, if we eliminate eleven acres in space for absorption, does that change our discussion with how we are addressing the current infrastructure in West Park?
Well, as part of their, you know, whatever goes out there per plan, you know, one way or another, you would have to have detention ponds to account for, you know, whatever impervious area you have for that, you know, I can't say with all the numbers and all that, I haven't seen any full plans with how big the ponds are and all that, but within our standards what we have, we, they have to hold a hundred-year storms worth of water in there, and there's certain rates they go out, so if you're taking away eleven acres of, say, pervious area and turn it into impervious area, those detention ponds would have to account for that. Another big thing with that is if there's already, say, a whole bunch of flow that's coming from the east side towards this property, they have to account for that flow too, they can't stop that from coming in, it has to be accounted for within that. So, you know, with those impervious and impervious areas, it all matters, you know, what's your coefficient of, like he was saying, how, how much soil is there, how much, how fast it absorbs through, there's coefficients that are standards on that, and that would determine how big your pond size is.
Well, thank you for that information, I think it's worth taking it forward if we move forward on this to make sure we're calculating right for West Park and Baker's Acres and whatever goes there, so thank you.
Any other questions for Wayne? Thank you, Ms. Bradigan.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
All right, third is Jackie McGee, she'd also like to speak about Carlin.
Hi, I'm Jackie McGee, president of the anti-build group, R-West Park. Before I talk about how the increased traffic affects on our neighborhood, I feel it is necessary to share a common communication I recently had with the mayor concerning our storm sewers. The non-existing ones we have paid for, for years, and I quote, "You are correct, there is little to no funding for your general storm sewer system, especially since it is not required because of how our area is already built for natural drainage," while our natural drainage is disappearing with each build. Moving on to our traffic problem, it starts in the dark of the morning when our children board the bus, we have no sidewalks, our children share the road with cars flying down the street. Most of our children already cost, already lost freedom to travel out of our neighborhood with the roundabout. Parents don't let their child cross the off and then the on-ramp of I-75 to go into town, especially since the signs of flashing crosslights are plowed down over on a regular basis. We are very blessed, no child has been hurt at this point, it seems our children's safety is not a priority. The vast number of additional cars doubling on our narrow streets would increase the danger to our children. Our streets are built for residential traffic, not as thoroughfares. We have five east and west streets that run directly from Lima Avenue to Carlin, these streets will become instant drag strips for the new additions. The newer homes and apartments always seem to have a shortage of parking, so when they are parking on our narrow streets with no curves, it only compounds the problems. Fix the problems we already have before adding to the infrastructure we now have. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
The last to speak on Carlin is Robin Welly.
Hello, I'm Robin Welly, president of West Park Block Watch. Thank you for your time, thanks for the West Park neighbors that all came to support us tonight. Our speakers made excellent points tonight, the green space, the flooding, the traffic, the inadequate streets we live in, tonight is just a brief part of what we discuss in depth at our block watch meetings. West Park doesn't have curbed sidewalks, storm sewers, but we do have the best block watch meeting in the whole city of Finley. And if you want to attest to it, we've got the guy right out there who'll swear to it, Brian White, he's excellent for us, I have to throw that in. The mayor is asking for a get-together with each ward, we do that every other month, before COVID, we did it every month. We revived our block watch because of the roundabout build. We went through three councilmen, John Harrington, Randy Greeno, and now Brian Baumann. Randy's the only one that has ever attended our meetings. Surprisingly, Mr. Baumann sent me a DM on Facebook in August saying he would be attending, that was great. Coincidentally, the same day, it was the same day we had the guys from the city coming to speak and help us. Then Mr. Baumann attended our anti-build meeting. Mr. Baumann has his own agenda, it is not a West Park agenda, he knows the hazards, and he's still not ready to fight with us. When we started circulating petitions, we hazards, and he's still not ready to fight with us. When we started circulating petitions, we had a great opportunity to speak with neighbors. Lots of them, we had reminiscing, lots of new stories. Here's a story that stands out most importantly. And had I known I was going to pass this around tonight, I promise you I would have had better handwriting. It's a George Freibus story. And here's his story. When Findlay announced it was not building the street department out in West Park, George inquired about it. His first adventure was to build a pole building and leave the rest as natural habitat. It was refused by the city. He then approached the city and proposed the following. He would buy it for $150,000, what the city paid. He would develop it into a wetland. He would put his name on it. He would turn the deed back over to the city. There's only one stipulation. It could never be sold. This offer was refused. I have had this story, but my husband wouldn't let me share it until I got George's signature. Yesterday, I went up to George, got his signature. He gave me permission today to tell you that offer is on the table. He will do just that. He will donate that land back to the city. This could be a solution for the city. This is definitely the best solution for the current West Park homeowners, and it's definitely a solution for our next generation of homeowners in West Park. If Brian Baumann does not get on this, he needs to stop telling people he represents West Park's best interests because he don't. When we attended the ad hoc committee meeting, we all walked in expecting to spar with Habitat. We were surprised with the new opponent. The mayor started the meeting with announcing the city wants to be the subdivision developer. Successful developers start on such an adventure with high hopes. They want to get in, get out, get their investment back, make a profit, and move on. But even under the best of situation, residential land development is a risky adventure. Nobody wants to build, and nobody wants to live in a subdivision knowing it's under construction for the next 10 years. We are asking the city not to allow any subdivision in our underdeveloped neighborhood. Every new build only adds to our existing problem. I want to thank you, and I suggest that you fix the problems we already have before adding to the infrastructure we now have. I have the original letter that I'll keep with me with George's signature on it and my, not even my best handwriting.
Any questions for Robin? Thank you, Robin.
Here's our petitions for them, and here's one for the file, please.
Hand it up here to the clerk, please.
I sure will.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Matt Cardonier. He would like to speak to the Superior Plating cleanup.
Good evening. Matt Cardonier with HRPC. I wanted to provide counsel with a quick update on the Superior Plating Brownfield remediation project. Our office assisted the county in applying for brownfield funds, and we're also assisting the county in the implementation of the grant. In addition to HRPC, the county has contracted with CEC Environmental out of Toledo, Ohio. They are the technical experts for the project and to ensure that the remediation project complies with all applicable state and federal laws. At the September 5 city council meeting, there was some discussion about the requirements of the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, or RICRA. However, the environmental consultant told us that the Superior Plating site is not a RICRA corrective action project, nor is it designated as a RICRA site. No mandatory orders have been issued from the EPA, state, or federal government to clean up the site. The county applied for and received brownfield funds from the Ohio Department of Development to clean up the site in preparation for the river benching project. Per the grant, the county is using the standards of the Ohio Voluntary Action Program. The voluntary action program gives entities a way to investigate possible environmental contamination, clean it up if necessary, and receive a promise from the state of Ohio that no more cleanup is needed. To date, 700 tons of soil have been removed and transported to Oregon, Ohio, to a special environmental contamination landfill. The project has seemingly sat idle. That is because they remove soil, they test. It takes several days for the testing to come back. So they removed the 700 tons of soil. They tested it. While they were testing it, it sat idle. The testing indicated that more soil should be removed, so they will be removing two more feet of soil, and then they will test again, and they will repeat that process until the testing is in compliance with state regulations. So it's kind of been a stop-and-start process from the beginning. Once the remediation is complete and no further action letter is prepared by the environmental consultant, the Ohio EPA reviews the letter and the project, then issues a covenant not to sue. At that time, the project is closed out and complete. I'm anticipating one question, and that is, why is the county the lead agency? So I'll just answer that one real quick. The brownfield grant only allows one lead agency per county. When this was applied for, there were three applications for brownfield remediation. One was in the city, and two were in the county. Additionally, this project is part of, the cleaning up is because of the river benching project, which is being coordinated by the county. And lastly, any costs above the grant amount, which was $500,000, would be paid for by the county via the Flood Mitigation Fund. So for those three reasons, the county is the lead agency on the remediation for that project. Are there any questions?
Ms. Fishy.
I just have one. You may not be able to answer it. We had a gentleman at council who spoke way up here. The one thing, one thing I got out of it or grasped from it, so you mentioned brownfield and the remediation for that. Does that, it sounded like a brownfield cleaning remediation is different if it is going to be a park, or if it's going to have people on it, or I didn't quite understand it. But it's like there was different types. So does this meet the standard for us to proceed with a park?
So I can, no, it's a habit. Something went off. So the consultant said that he expects to have a clean bill of health for the site. He says if there's any restrictions, it would be not to, the only restriction would be not to build residential homes on the site. But, so he's not sure how it's going to come back. He said he expects no limitation. If there was a limitation, it would be not to construct residential homes on the site.
Other questions? Thanks, Matt, for the update.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to move on with regular council business. You're all welcome to stay, but if you're all going to get up and leave all at the same time, I'd take a five-minute break. Welcome to stay. Thank you. All right. On to reports of officers and departments.
Findlay Municipal Court Activities Report for August 2023.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding the transfer of funds from the Service Safety Director budget to the Law Director budget.
Questions or comments? Ms. Fishy.
Can we read that, make a motion to have that read into the council minutes, please?
Second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor of having the letter read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The letter will be read.
The City of Findlay Law Director's Office has incurred unexpected legal fees this year that are depleting their budget. In anticipation of additional legal fees to be incurred through the end of the year, I respectfully request a resolution to transfer as follows. From Service Safety Director, $20,000, number, account number 21020000-OTHER to Law Director, account number 21005000-OTHER, $20,000. By copy of this letter, the Law Director is requested to prepare the necessary legislation that will authorize the transfer of funds as identified above.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Fishy.
Don, or I guess I'll start. I'll ask the auditor first. Funds in the service director's budget, is that depleting it, or is there quite a bit still there?
I defer to the service director to say whether or not, service safety director to say whether or not he has enough money. However, I do think this is in order to keep the legal expenses unified, although it's my belief and understanding that I think this is regarding expenses incurred with BRICKER with regard to the water subject.
Numbers for me, Rob.
I'm sorry.
What's your budget have balance-wise in there right now?
This does not deplete my budget, so we're...
Just looking for a number.
I'm sorry?
Just a number.
I don't have that exact number, but I know that I still have funds left in this for the rest of the year. So again, I have a line item for legal services in the service director's budget, and we went to appropriate, or create a PO, and the auditor said that legal services need to come out of the law director's office, even though I have a line item for it. So therefore, we're just making a transfer.
What is, what is your legal expense of, so what have you been doing in that safety service director position?
I have not used any to this point this year.
So it's not a safety service director expense for legal?
Well, you budget, you budget legal for the unknowns. So I had a legal line item, and this was appropriate use of it.
Okay, so I guess I'll go to Don. Don, you're quiet lately. So...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said Don would be my final question because I'm not really getting there. So he's quiet lately, so I figure I'll get him to talk a little bit. So we have a process in city council that if there is a bill over 3,000 without a PO, we have that resolution ordinance that we get the line item and we have to approve it. You've been having a lot of money on legal side. So I, moving this money from one department to another is inappropriate, in my view, because then it's eliminating the process of us having the discussion of what you have a bill for over 3,000 without a PO. So I don't support this transfer, but can you tell me what the bills are that you need? How much is in your budget right now, and what is this $20,000 going to be used for specifically to pay?
It's to pay the legal bills that we have and anticipate having in the future. We're working through these cases, and we're narrowing the amount of cases that we have down. But I can't say what's going to come up in the future, so.
So what's the bill for? You have a bill, so spit it out. Like, we wouldn't be moving money from one, or asking to move money from one department to another if there wasn't a bill that we needed to pay. I want to know what that bill is, since we're trying to eliminate paying, moving money and not having a PO and not discussing something. So I need to know what you need it for, and if you don't need it for anything, then why are we moving it? If you don't have a bill right now, what is your bill for, or bills?
Ms. Mayor.
So Councilwoman, I'll address this because I wanted to address some of your prior comments. So first of all, this is for the BRICKER-GRADEN bill, which previously, we did not need your approval to pay, except for that the PO was messed up. So I appreciate you pointing out the fact that the administration, including the law director and the service safety director, do not need council authority to pay legal bills unless the PO was done appropriately, which in that previous case, it did. And in this case, we wouldn't be having to transfer the money, even though the service safety director, my budget, we all have a legal services line item. But the auditor's office stated they wanted it for their reporting purposes, whatever that may be, to be paid out of the law director's office. So we are following their request to pay that bill. So as the service safety director stated, we have a legal line item. We could typically just pay these bills, and in this case, we are moving it per the auditor's request.
Ms. Fishy.
Wow. I mean, wow is my first answer. I don't care what you think your process is. Usually, when there is a big project, like selling the city water to other villages or communities, that goes to water and sewer. It continues to be dodged and not taken to water and sewer, and you seem to be spending money and writing contracts without discussing with council. So if you want to say that you didn't need permission for a $3,000 PO, I call BS because you are supposed to work with city council. We have not told you what we want or don't want, or what this community wants or does not want. So this sidestep to try to get a bill paid, I'm assuming you probably are still meeting with BRICKER-ECKLER and continuing your discussions and still ignoring council and having any discussion. Completely inappropriate. This request is inappropriate. So right now, you have a resolution ordinance that's sitting where we removed, I guess we don't have one sitting, we removed your last bill. And you sent an email to me when I asked you, I asked her for the contracts that she drew up for Arlington and North Baltimore, and she told me those are not public documents, and she doesn't have to show them to me. But she would be glad to show them to me in person only, but would not email, to which I told her, well, if she's meeting with BRICKER-ECKLER on her own, then that's her own dime, and she can pay that bill.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Mayor.
So Councilwoman, I'm not going to get into the back and forth that you so much enjoy. I will just continue to restate the facts, which are, as mayor, I have the responsibility to bring to council thoroughly thought-out proposals. In this instance, I was gathering information from the communities that had reached out to us to potentially provide them water, either in a bulk method or working with them long-term to apply for grants, to get their system up to par, to be able to ensure that they have appropriate drinking water for their community. I then made the operational decision to consult legal experts, not only that are legal experts, but also engineering experts, to say, this is how this could potentially be structured. It was then my full intention, as I had communicated to council when you were not on council at that point in time, to then bring it to them to say, hey, this is what the request is. Here are what the options are. Here is what that might mean operationally. How would you like to move forward? What other additional information? Which is what I do with every single other committee with every, you don't need to keep shaking your head because I know that you don't understand what I'm trying to explain to you, but that's the responsibility of the mayor. And then I bring it to council and I say, how would you like to proceed? Is this something we want to understand? The only reason that this has become a big deal is because it's being politicized, and individuals on council and other individuals that have positions in the city have decided to, instead of moving forward with facts and information to make an educated recommendation on behalf of the community and what is best for both the community and in partnership for the county moving forward, they've instead decided to play politics with half-truths and spitball information, saying that I'm somehow trying to circumvent a process, or that I'm trying to do a disservice, or I'm trying to annex all parts of the county, which is simply false and ridiculous and a waste of the taxpayer's time. So if you actually want to have accurate information, I'm happy to meet with you at any point in time. But what I'm not going to do is fall into your political games and provide you information that you can piecemeal parts out of and put on social media to get clicks because that's not in the best interest of the community. So when you're ready to meet and have an adult conversation, I'm happy to do it. Until that point in time, we can move on with the meeting.
I'm sorry, we've...
No, I have a question or comment.
Hang on a second.
How does she get to call the question?
Please be quiet while I'm speaking. Under the rules of council, no speaker may filibuster. No speaker shall speak for more than five minutes on any question except by the leave of the presiding officer of majority vote of council members present. You've exceeded your five minutes unless the rest of council would like you to continue by a motion and a second, and I will ask you to move on.
Did you time me?
Do I hear a motion from any of the other council people? Hearing none?
No, I point of order. Did you... Did you time me that I was over five minutes? Did you time the mayor that she was over five minutes? And does the policy state that we can only talk once, or if there is legitimate communication for our community happening, that we should not continue that discussion?
My, my comment to that is...
Did you time me or not, President Harrington?
My comment to that is yes, and also you have...
You did, can I see that, please?
It's been deleted at this point in time.
It's been deleted, of course. What did you...
Excuse me?
You will be quiet, or you will be asked to be removed by a police officer, so please mind your comments.
So, again?
Ms. Fishy. There are motions to be made that you can continue this conversation. You have made your point over and over.
According to you? Point of order, according to you?
Mr. Welbser. Yes, it says Presiding Officer, that's me.
I'll make a motion that Ms. Fishy may ask another question succinctly.
Mr. Niemeyer, second? All those in favor, go ahead. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Okay, there you go. That's all I'm doing, is following the rules. That's all I'm doing.
Glad we got there.
That's all I'm doing, following the rules.
So, am I allowed to speak now?
Ask a question.
So, I just, we have to clarify, Mayor. First of all, economic development, in their minutes, discussed with Arlington about extending water. Nothing is being politicized, and I have no problem, as a member of council, when you are exploring an idea and communicating with council. But when you are spending money, lots of money, without there being discussion, then that's the problem. So, there's no politicizing, there's no social media clicks. Stick to the facts. We can move on now.
Last comment, and then we're going to move on. Ms. Mayor.
Yep, I would just like to...
Wait, I think we need to have a motion. Point of, point of order, we need a motion. She talked at least five minutes.
She's, she's recognized as a speaker. Go ahead.
I'm not a member of council, therefore, I have the ability to speak. ED, you are correct, as I shared in the public records request to both yourself and the auditor, and as I've shared on a monthly basis with all of council and which are of public record, economic development did have a conversation with Arlington, because they represent the entire county, which includes the city, Village of Arlington. And as I stated in that conversation, the city was not a part of it, and the conversation, my understanding, is that they are interested, Arlington is interested in planning their community development down the road, and obviously, water is a part of that. Now, does that change the conversation for the city? No, personally, I don't believe so, but that would be a part of the conversation with council when we got to that point in time. So, yes, economic development was doing their job, just as I'm doing mine.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then we're going to move on.
A letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding farmland leases.
Questions or comments? Mr. Baumann.
Yeah, Rob. Regarding your letter, I just kind of wanted to clarify, because perhaps there was some misinformation in today's courier regarding this, this, this ad. We are fastly approaching 2024, and we need to put out for bid, so a farmer can cash rent that, that property, correct?
Correct. As, as, when this conversation started with the Carlin property, we did intentionally withhold the Carlin property from the bidding process, hence, we're at the third reading. With the discussion in the subcommittee conversations that have happened, I feel that we're in a position, we need to move forward because of the timing of the bidding process. And with the Carlin property, what I'd like to do is add, and I will work through that on the legal side of that agreement, that if, whatever the decision is with Carlin property, residential, if that's what the decision is down the road, we will have an out clause at the end of year one, that we would then be able to move forward with that. But I don't want to miss out on the opportunity for it to be maintained as agricultural property, and if it is not maintained as that, then we would have to mow it and maintain it. So, this seemed like the most logical with timing and the uncertainty of moving forward with that property.
Might as well make money on it while we, while we have the chance. And so, that would, that would, next year's, next year would not be impacted. It would, we would only say if we took that out, it would be after next year's harvest, 2024 harvest.
I would identify that it would not impact the harvest of '24, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding... Yeah, council award events for 2024 budget season.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from City Engineer Calb regarding the 2023 Street Prevention Maintenance Project Number 32830300.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell.
Jeremy, is, Jeremy, is this something that you want done tonight? Are the, because I would assume we're getting towards the end of our preventative maintenance season.
I mean, ultimately, that's your guys' decision, but yeah, we're getting to the end of it. I mean, we would be able to use the money, like I stated in the letter and stuff, they, in the email and stuff, they, they're moving pretty quick on street reserve scene, so we have some alternate streets that we could squeeze in and a couple more alleys. So, you know, while the weather's nice, we might as well take advantage. So, I would appreciate if, if I could get that money tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Fishy.
Do you not happen to have a list that you can ramble off to make people happy?
I, I don't on me. I mean, I can get that, but that's all of our street department. That's their list that they do the work.
Other questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from City Auditor Stachak regarding the salary ordinance. He requests that this letter be read.
Ms. Fishy.
Make the motion have it read.
Second, Mr. Greeno. All those in favor of having the letter read, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Please read the letter.
As Paymaster for the city, the salary ordinance has typically been revised by the auditor's office with changes requested by the administration and presented to council for review. Attached is this year's updated pay ordinance. The changes made to the existing ordinance are summarized in the attached document titled 2024 Salary Ordinance Changes. The mayor's administration and the auditor's office have reviewed the document. It is important, a completed, it is important, a completed ordinance is passed by your first meeting in December, which includes the emergency clause, so we can continue the city's regular course of business. Additional time has been incorporated into the process to allow for a community, committee review, should you deem that appropriate.
Questions or comments? Mr. Welbser.
I think that we probably ought to take this to appropriations and go into this a little bit more in-depth. We've got some time on this, do we not, Mr. Auditor? It's end of year, but you've got to have it by first of December, is that correct? Our first meeting in December, it's got to be approved. So, we've still got a little bit of time. So, I'd suggest we refer this to appropriations.
Need a second council member? Mr. Russell. All those in favor of sending this to appropriations, say aye. Any opposed, nay? That's what's going to happen.
City Planning Commission Agenda of September 14th, 2023, as well as the Staff Report of September 14th, 2023.
Questions or comments? Report and agenda to be filed.
Summary financial reports as of August 31st, 2023.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed. Committee reports.
A committee of the whole meeting was held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, to discuss the city's mid-year review.
Mr. Russell.
Move, move to accept the committee report.
Second, Mr. Hellman. Discussion. Mr. Stachak.
I'd just like to further clarify the record to say it was discussed from the aspect of the, the act for the financial report that's done annually by our outside state contracted audit firm, and included discussion of the management comments from that document.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay? The committee report is adopted.
An ad hoc committee met on September 12th, 2023, to review land transfer requests from Habitat for Humanity Carlin Property. We recommend that the administration will work on a plan for possible development.
Mr. Welbser.
Make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second, Mr. Baumann. Discussion. Mr. Stachak.
I just want to mention, I was unable to fit in the room during that meeting with those big tables in there, and I didn't want to sit on the tables, it would have been awkward. But from all I gather, I just want to share the comment that the city in, to the history that I'm aware of, going back very far, has never been a developer. So, I'm going to encourage the administration to work very, very closely with my office in advance, and very slowly and patiently, to make sure that this is discussed thoroughly, all aspects and concerns are discussed, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Okay, the committee report is adopted.
Sorry, making a note. Committee of the whole meeting was held on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, to discuss zoning code updates.
Questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion first. Mr. Russell.
Move to accept the committee report.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Discussion. Mr. Welbser.
I was just going to say, I thank Matt for his time and effort putting together the presentation did, going through all the changes. It was good discussion, and it was, I think the thing most important that came out of that, at least to me, was the fact that these weren't major sweeping changes in our code. It was really just a lot of cleanup of the code to get it up to date, and make a couple of changes needed to be done by state statute. So, appreciate the time and effort your group put into that, Matt.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Committee report is adopted.
The Water and Sewer Committee met on September 13th, 2023, to discuss the State of Ohio Water Line to Van Buren State Park. We recommend that the administration pursue the agreement with the Village of Van Buren for a water line, and to increase the proposed six-inch line to an eight-inch line to Van Buren State Park.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for acceptance of committee report.
Second, Mr. Slough. Discussion. Ms. Fishy.
I wasn't able to be at that meeting, but I was able to see it. I guess I don't understand how they got to the administration pursuing the agreement with, with the Village of Van Buren, when there wasn't ample discussion on the current agreements with Van Buren and the limitations, and then also discussing the impact on our system to our community. And then the auditor, it seemed, brought out several times that this is a Van Buren project, not a Finley project. So, if they want to increase the line, or if they want to just put in a six-inch, the project really should be at their cost. I don't know how we're getting into us exploring and putting dollars into it before we've looked at all of the details of the contract, of the contracts, I guess we have in place, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Stachak.
Ms. Fishy, I appreciate your comments, and I want to reiterate to council, number one, have you established that the 1999 agreement that was distributed is the correct agreement? Second thing is, that agreement, from my reading of it, that's exactly right. The Van Buren decides what they're going to do with their system, how they're going to do it, when they're going to do it. Alls we do is spec it, because Van Buren has, according to that document and the intent of that, and on Finley's side, complete control as to where it grows, how it grows. If it wants growth, they may not want an oversized line. Now, if we spec it because there's reason for it, that's a different issue. But I'm, I'm very, very, I'm very, very concerned how this approach has come about, and I want to be very conscientious and very respectful of the fact that this is Van Buren sovereignty with regard to this line. And I believe the state should have went to Van Buren, they should have worked it out with Van Buren, and then Van Buren would have said, this is outside the purvey of our, certain aspects of our agreement. Let's go to Finley now and see if they're amenable to this, and then we'll go from there. I'm not sure how this got to here anyways, but we'll have to work very cautiously as they move forward. I'm not against anything here, I'm not, I'm not concerned about it from that aspect. I just want to make sure we do it right and honor what has agreed to.
Mr. Greeno.
Yeah, I'd like to call on Jeremy to kind of give us a little bit of background on this project and how it came about, and if you are to be looking at the legal with Van Buren on this, so could you kind of fill us in on...
Yeah, so, give a long story short on that. Everyone knows kind of where the state park is with their campground out there. We were approached on that, because they are needing a water service out there. They currently have a well, and with the water quality that they have out there, they are pretty much tapped out of solutions of what they can do. We currently have a water main that is out on 613 that could run out there. They've explored every option they can, and they've came back to the same thing. So, we were approached on that, on running that main out there. What they are wanting to do is, the state is going to run the line all the way out to the east side of their property, and they are going to pay for all of it. They didn't even want to set up a rotary to even worry about trying to get money back on that. They need it for their services out there, for their campground stuff. So, they are running out there, they are paying it out there. In those conversations, they only are needing a six-inch to run out there, to get it stretched out there. If we ever have any kind of taps on top, on top of that, or any fire suppression and stuff like that, it would be beneficial for future use. Who knows what's in the future, but to size that up to an eight-inch. What we do normally, and this is not the first time we've ran into this practice of paying for the upsizing, we pay for just the material only. No labor, no anything else, and that is what is placed in the ground on that. They came back with an estimated cost, and this is because it's estimated quantities right now, it is not in the ground or anything like that. It is eighty-two, say, $83,000 for 8,400 feet of pipe. The other option that could be happening with this is, you pretty much set a master meter back at, or a one-meter back at 613, and then that is a main line, or a service line all the way down there that no one could tap onto, because that's a private line. Once they're done building this, they are wanting to turn it over to us for our maintenance and stuff, but we would just pay for the, for the upcharge on that. They would be doing all our specs and everything. We would have inspectors out there, they would reimburse our inspectors for the placement of the line. But there are 17 properties down there that have the potential to tie onto it. There's also another campground that has 300 campsites within that. So, if you look at what their daily load would be on all those people, and if they are running their daily load every single day, it'd be about 38,000 gallons a day. Right now, Van Buren is running in the 100,000 gallon a day category. Per their contract, per the contract of 1999, they can go up to a maximum of 576,000 gallons. Now, that is kind of one of the reasons right there between those numbers, you can see why we were having some issues with the chlorine residual up there, where we had to do dumping of water, because they are not meeting that. So, this extra 40,000 gallons, or 38,000 gallons a day, is not going to stress the system, is not going to stress our system. And also, those campgrounds are not going to be running 12 months a year, they're running nine months out of the year. With that running in the line, you know, that, that will be under our care on that. I know it's within the service area of that, but I don't see, from my point of view, how Van Buren should be paying for the upsizing on that, when we are the ones receiving the revenue, if that is our line. So, all the Van Buren residents, or anyone outside the city limits, are paying one and a half times our water rate. So, they are paying into our water bill for that. So, this, that water fund that is being used and to fund that, is also funded from their funds and from our city funds as well, for both of our citizens. This is a service they are needing. I see ourselves as a service industry, if you want to say, where I am wanting to help out a state park, another, you know, that is needing, because they have no water on that. We will never see this opportunity to run, if we had a line that, run that line out there, that'd be a million-dollar job for us to run out there. So, I see this as a great opportunity for us to build that line out there and just pay for the upsizing for future use.
Mr. Baumann.
I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess where I took it as, you know, a, an agreement, this agreement is really between us and the State of Ohio, because it's a state park. Where we were talking agreement with the Village of Van Buren was that it's okay for us to be digging around in their backyard, essentially.
Yeah, so, it's, it's within their service area per the contract. So, they set up a service area back in '99 of where they would eventually see, you know, if, if, I don't want to speak for them, but where they, they would see their village expand to. So, they kind of had a service area built in with that. During this whole process, we've been in contact with Van Buren, they know about the project, they're in support of the project. I talked with Ed May on that. You know, he's in support of the project, but you know, like, like, from their eyes, if the line goes in or the line doesn't, if the line goes in or does not go in, they don't see any positive or negative from that. They don't get any revenue kickback from that line going in or out. We are the ones that are seeing that revenue on that. So, expanding that line... are seeing that revenue on that. So expanding that line now, ultimately, that is our system that we are going out there, that we have to maintain. We have to say we are the ones supplying good water to them. So that's why we kind of stepped in, and we were saying this is the line we are wanting just for future builds.
Mr. Greenham.
Have we talked with any legal, I mean, looked at the contract to make sure that we are able to do what we want to do? Or has there been any discussion with legal, I guess, legal people on this?
Our, our legal department did review the contracts. We are going, based on the nineteen ninety contract, and this, for all intensive purposes, is our, this is our system through Van Buren. That's our extension. And we are, once it's in the ground, it is the property of the City of Finley to maintain and to be able to extend as we want, within or without of the city limits.
Mr. Hellman.
I feel a little whipsawed here when you keep saying "we" and "they." We being the City of Finley, they being the State of Ohio, and not Van Buren. Is that correct?
So the State of Ohio is going to be building this line and running it out to their property. And then the city would be taking over care for that. So it is being built within our specs, so that it meets, you know, if they are needing easements or within the right-of-way and all that. They've, they have worked, or, excuse me, the state has worked with the townships. The townships have agreed with the line of where it's going. The county has agreed with the line where it's going. The city has agreed on the specs that they're, the type of pipe they're putting in, the depths and all that kind of stuff, the fittings and all that. And then the city also said, instead of a six-inch, we understand you only need a six-inch to run to your property, but for future use and for redundancy, like I said, the city said we would, the city wants to see that as an eight-inch.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but Mr. Palmer has to leave for an issue. So I just want everybody to be aware. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Hope, hope everything is what you're hoping for. So, all right. So, Mr. Hellman.
And if, so the city would own the line. If there is a request for another tap fee or another tap, do they request it from the state? Do they request it from the city?
That it would be from the city, because it will be a city line.
Okay.
The, the only thing the city is not doing is not installing this line and paying for the whole construction. We are only paying for the upsizing from a six-inch to an eight-inch.
Gotcha.
So that's where that eighty-three thousand is coming in, because that's the cost of the pipe going from a six-inch to eight-inch, fittings and all that kind of stuff.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Russell.
The committee report, it says, it says that we were going to pursue the agreement with the Village of Van Buren. And Jeremy, I know you were speaking with Mayor May, and you, and you referenced that. My kind of understanding is that we were going to ask Mayor May and the Village of Van Buren to do any of the necessary steps they needed to do in order for this to proceed in a legal manner, and that I think we're going to work. I don't know if the Village, who their solicitor is, if it was Rob, and they were going to talk with that guy about it to ensure. And, and, you know, my understanding is those steps are happening. Is that correct, Jeremy, or Rob, or Rob, or?
That is correct. So Ed May's had conversations with multiple people, including their solicitor, and he's in agreement. And if it pleases council, they're willing, he's willing to provide a letter of support of this. But again, this is between the state and the city. Initially, during the conversation, a bystander brought up concern and uncertainty of the contract, and we were still in the process of reviewing it at that time about the involvement of Van Buren, and that's not the case.
Ms. Frishy.
Um, I'll work my way backwards. So the solicitor for Van Buren is one of our employees, and then our law director, and they're from the same law firm. Okay, I'm not sure I like your opinion. At the end of the day, I'm just going to tell you that on the record. Robin, I don't know that it's appropriate. Number two, I can't remember if it was the ninety-nine or the ninety-eight agreement, but when I was reading it, when we, when we put that line in, Van Buren could only hook up one fire truck, because if they hooked up more than one fire truck, it could deplete the pressure in our system inside the city and cause us issues. And then, when we talk about dumping daily, I thought we were dumping because of Home Depot, because of their fire suppression, that we had to make sure everything was rotating, and that's why we dumped every day. And I, and so those are just my couple comments there. But my, my question or my comment about where we're at and what we're discussing, I mean, originally, it was Van Buren is who we were working with. Now it's the state that Brian brings out. But at the end of the day, it's not whether we're for it or we're against it. We care about ourselves first and how it's going to impact us inside the city. And then, from there, we have the discussion. They could install those lines and give them back to us, but we have to know that our system can take it, and we're not going to have a problem. And are you, Jeremy, saying that the extension inside the city limits and the mayor is projecting about annexing then, or something to be able to bring more business into that area, that we're going to be tapping in other businesses before it even gets to the, the state park?
I guess, I'm confused how you're bleeding those two subjects together on that.
I don't, I don't understand where you're.
I guess, can you restate your question on what you're asking?
So the water line extension, you said, from a six-inch to an eight-inch for future development, is what one of the reasons were. And then we're going to manage it. And then we talked about the tap fee, and anybody wanting to tap into us, I would assume we're talking business industry out that direction, or maybe housing. I could be wrong, I guess. But this tap fee would come back to us. So it sounds like we're anticipating some kind of development prior to reaching the state park. Is that what we're?
So are you saying we should just design water lines at our present time, and then when someone comes in to tie in, we say, oh, no, we should do it as an eight-inch?
Oh, no, 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 no. That's not what I'm saying.
I guess I'm still confused by, you, you design the water lines by what you have out there that could potentially tie in. So right now, we know the state park is going to, they are wanting it their user. Now, within that whole area, we have seventeen residential homes that could tie into it, as well as a campground. They are not required to tie into it, but if they do need, if they need to tie into that, or they want to tie into it, then we need to make sure that we can, one, still supply water down to the state park, supply water to all these people, and then also, when there's hydrants on there for fire suppression. So you, you don't normally, even with sanitary licenses on that, you don't just design to what you have there. You always look for, if I go east, or if I go north or south, what's it going to look like in the future?
But we don't typically look at our water system outside of our city limits. We could do that all day to Toledo or to Texas if we wanted to and keep developing, but what I'm.
Let me, let me clarify that real quick before you go on with that, because we have built for the future. One of, you know, one of the, Home Depot, let's say, that, that was going to be built as a, I believe, an eight-inch going underneath I-75. We don't know what's going to go west of that. So at that time, we said we want a ten-inch going under that for any kind of future expansion. Another one is when Deer Ridge down towards the south, they only needed a six-inch to go around there. We said for future and for our, to help our water supply, we had a sixteen-inch go in there.
We did the oversize on that.
You know, we did the oversize on that. So these are the conversations that we know that, okay, in the future, if we need to, how our water system reacts on that.
Yeah, but, but we're skipping this, the, the, we're skipping the process of, can we do it? Can we handle it? Can we provide adequately without negatively impacting those here? That's where I don't, I don't see anywhere in this discussion where we're having that discussion. And when we know we have a northern ridge water situation inside the city limits with pressure, and when we read that you can't hook up more than one fire truck, and I, that may have been the ninety-eight, and it changed to ninety-nine.
So that, that was the ninety, ninety-eight.
But those are the things that we're not discussing. You know, Mr. Roos did that. It took us six years to get to the Van Buren project. And Mr. Hackenberg was our law director, and he goes, that's not the business we're supposed to be in, you know? Because once we extend for one, we have to keep doing it and paying for it. And so that's the discussion I want to see before we're jumping forward, just because the state wants to extend water to the state park. I think we have to still make sure that, take care of us.
Mr. Greenham.
We have the water superintendent here. I'd like to hear him speak on, can we handle thirty thousand gallons a day to Van Buren without it affecting the system here in Finley? Also considering that we are wasting approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a day for blow-off into the sewer system to keep the sewer system from having odor problems that comes back into the City of Finley. So we're wasting right now two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons. Is that correct?
Make sure the red light's on.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we still are, we still have the flushing stations going.
Right.
One, there at 613 that feeds right into the pump station to keep the flow going and the odor down. The other one in the subdivision behind, or directly north of the township house and the ball fields.
So basically, we're doing that because we're not getting enough flow through the Van Buren system.
Correct. We, for chlorine residual and for odor control, yes.
So by adding a little thirty thousand gallon line, that would help the situation maybe a little bit, not a lot. You're not going to stop wasting, but at least we would be getting paid for some of this wasted water that we're doing now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
That's thirty thousand gallons now, but if we keep tapping into it, what's that number going to be? And are we setting parameters? I get it that we dump off because we have to, but even with that dumping off, we're having problems with pressure inside the city of Finley with residential properties.
Mr. Wobson.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Stacia.
Two things. I guess, one, if we're truly wasting two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of water through a flushing program, has there been a number calculated to tell us what the net benefit to us is of this program? Is it even worth doing and expanding? And we really need to see that number. You might want to consider that as part of this process. Second thing is, and the most important thing I want to say, is that the shoe is on the other foot. What we see, when we see grants, contracts, and everything else the State of Ohio is involved in, is a resolution of support from the legislative authority. I see no letter, no resolution, nothing from the City of Van Buren here that says they are in agreement with our interpretation of the contract they're a party to. Maybe it's there, maybe it's not. I'm not questioning the integrity of anyone here. What I'm saying is, why would you move forward without a resolution of their intent and their request? Because this is part of their system. It does go to their, their contract that is in place. So I would hope you would at least consider doing that before you would move forward. And I think that way, you would know as a body that, that the politics is out of it, everything's out of it. Van Buren says, this is really what we want, and this is our resolution, saying this is what we want. So it's clear for you folks, because the contract is clear that Van Buren has sovereignty over whether or not they want that growth irregardless. So what we do, we have the right to spec it, and, and that's clear from that language. So that's my recommendation to you, that you consider getting that resolution or something from Van Buren's legislative authority that's formal, official, and protects everyone, including us.
Ms. Mayor.
So we will get any documentation that is necessary. I would just like to point out that, God forbid, we had brought something from Van Buren stating that we had already discussed and gotten their approval that this is the direction they want to move with, before we had discussed it in committee. So that's exactly what we did. We had the conversation in committee. You all said, yes, we are supportive, and this is what we would like to see. We will now get formal documentation from Van Buren that this is the direction they want to move in. And yes, we will provide you the legal documentation that we have on this subject. I would just like to point out, so that we can move on in the discussion, I would redirect you to the letter that I provided a couple of council meetings that provides the breakdown of the water supply which we have, the quarterly reservoir reports which you get, which provide commentary on the year, multi, about five years' worth of water that we have in our reservoirs on a regular basis, and the six million-plus gallons of capacity that we have on a daily basis within our system. Our priority is definitely the City of Finley. We also have a great opportunity to monetize our excess while also improving the quality of our system by adding these various lines. So I would just point that out again.
Mr. Stacia.
Hey, real quick, just, just for the benefit, because I know the paper watches this, there has never been a five-year supply reported to this body that I'm aware of. Additionally, I don't know, it's been some time since the actual capacity of that reservoir has been calculated. Plus, those reports don't take into consideration the fact that we're not going to drain them completely. So I think that, that report as to how much water is actually in those reservoirs probably should be reevaluated from a technical and engineering standpoint, so that we know it's accurate, not just a ballpark, spit in a, spit in a bucket estimate of how much water we have.
Mr. Greenham.
Does our water treatment, do you have a, a number for us on that? How many years?
Well, multiple things have, have changed since the eighty-eight drought and stuff. So specifically, one of the things that helps generate that report is the fact that in ninety-seven, we changed the pump station at the river. So we can actually have two variable-speed pumps that allow us to pump water into the reservoir when the river is much lower. So that's why we always confidently say that we have about a four-year, four-to-five-year supply in the reservoir.
Okay. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay. Oh, I'm sorry. No, not a voice vote. I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The committee report is adopted.
Sorry, got to make a note here. Just before I start, there were edits to this first Planning and Zoning Committee report for the annexation zoning, because revised information came to city planning after the county commissioners heard the case. So there's some changes. The Planning and Zoning Committee, to whom is referred a request for twelve parcels totaling fifty-seven-point-six-five-one acres of County Road Ninety-Nine that are situated in Allen Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, that are currently in the process of being annexed into the City of Finley, Ohio limits. All the parcels are to be given I-1 light industrial zoning, except for parcel number zero-two-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-three-zero-two-eight-zero, and the eastern one-point-three-five-one acres of parcel number zero-two-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-three-zero-two-five-one. We recommend approval as requested and per reference to the attached map.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Second, Mr. Slough, discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Denise, you said that it's not, it's not a hundred and thirty-eight acres, it's fifty-seven acres, or?
Correct.
Mr. Russell.
County commissioner, the original request is for the a hundred and thirty-eight-ish acres, and county commissioners came back and only approved the fifty-seven-point-six-nine-one that we are giving the initial zoning to. And so when they, which is, which is a little bit rare that they don't, that they change what we request. And so when they, when they didn't bring back, when they, when they changed it, that's, that's why we have the, the changes that Denise referred to, and that's why the, the numbers are, are less than what we originally had requested from the county commissioners.
Ms. Frishy.
So what, so looking at the map, is it just, I mean, what did they take out? And do we know why they didn't want to?
They took out the, the northern half. It kind of went above the, there's a road up there, and it kind of went, went, it kind of snaked its way above there.
The map is accurate.
And there was some discussion, my understanding was that the, in the, from the township trustees and the county commissioners concerned about that, the north, the farther north, it's not on your map there, but that was part of the original request. And it was, I think most of it was owned by the same person. And so we tried to have it all brought in at one time. The county commissioner said no.
Any questions, additional questions or comments? Mr. Hellman.
I just have a, a request, maybe of Dan. In the future, can we get better maps than what we've got here that kind of more definitively explain what we're doing? I'm somewhat familiar with it because of the economic development. I'm somewhat familiar with it because of the economic development position I have there at the Alliance, but it's still confusing to me if I were, I mean, especially if I were a novice looking at this thing.
Mr. Russell.
During the, during that committee, Dennis, there was a lot of conversation about that specific map. And, and, and Matt and the person whose name, who runs our planning and zoning, Jake, thank you, sorry, mad cow moment there, actually came over and had, had to go through this map specifically to explain the, the different parts of it. So yes, this is a, this is, this is not an easy case to simply do by reading. That is why the committee report included the map that Jake and Matt were going to ensure explained it better with pictures than 100,000s of words.
Thank you. Sorry I was out of town for the meeting, but I appreciate this.
The committee would probably think you were not really sorry you were out of town.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. And opposed, nay. The committee report is adopted.
Planning and zoning committee, to whom is referred a request from Commander David Rhodes of the VFW Post 5645 to rezone 315 Walnut Street from R3 Small Lot Residential to C1 Local Commercial. We recommend approval as requested.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. And opposed, nay. The committee report is adopted.
Planning and zoning committee, to whom is referred a request from Dan Stone, Van Horn, Hoover, and Associates Incorporated on behalf of, I don't know if it's Nyper or Nipper, Industrial Holdings LLC to rezone 1700 Fostoria Avenue from C2 Commercial to I-1 Light Industrial. We recommend to table the request.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. All those in favor of adopting the committee report, say aye. And opposed, nay. The committee report is adopted. Legislation. We start with resolutions.
First reading for a resolu, or second reading for Resolution 21, 2023, a resolution transferring funds within appropriated funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
First reading for Resolution 23, 2023, a resolution transferring funds within appropriated funds and declaring an emergency.
Ordinances.
Third reading for ordinance 2023-76, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, indoor city engineer of the city of Finley, Ohio to apply for and execute the necessary grant application or applications and agreement or agreements to receive grant funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission for replacement water line on Moracle Boulevard from I-75 to Bliss Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greenow.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-076.
Second, Mr. Slough, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer, I'm sorry. Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnick, oh, Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First, third reading for ordinance 2023-81. Do I read it first before they amend it?
Yep.
An ordinance authorizing the service safety director of the city of Finley, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a lease agreement or agreements to farm approximately 181 acres in the vicinity of the airport, approximately 64 acres in the vicinity of the reservoirs, all owned by the city of Finley, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
I make a motion to amend the ordinance as requested by Service Safety Director Martin in his letter and is included in our packet at showing 2023-081 as amended.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Earlier, Rob, when Brian mentioned adding this in and that we weren't stopping the discussion of the other potential project, I thought you said somewhere in here that it was, because they're all three-year contracts, but there was something in there that you could get out of your three-year contract, but I don't see it.
Typically, these are three-year leases.
Good.
Typically, they're three-year leases, but when this goes out to bid, when we make that arrangement with that, whoever this is, the farmer, will make that clause in that agreement specifically to Carlin.
So when we go out for bid, wait, we publish it? We shouldn't, we don't have to publish that?
That would be, that would be part of that discussion with that, yes.
So it shouldn't be in here, Don? We don't need to have it in here carved out in this ordinance, this amended ordinance to say that? That's all I'm asking. It sounds like we should, but...
No. We haven't done it that way for a while.
But we don't usually amend them. We usually say three years, and it's three years, right?
Right.
But this one potentially isn't, or it isn't?
Potentially is or isn't what?
Three years by adding this piece of property in.
Well, I don't know that. That's based on what decisions made by the committee, if they make an informed decision on what to move forward with Carlin.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Stachak.
So if I understand your question, Mrs. Frishy, you're saying that because this says to, it's giving the service safety director permission to enter in for a period of three years. It's very specific that he doesn't have the option of opting out for a lesser amount. So if you pass this, it's three-year agreements for all of those parcels, and that's the way my office would view it, if I understand your question.
Mayor.
Yeah, so we will ensure, so based off of this, we can do three years, but in the language of the advertisement, we can also have an out clause where we provide notice just as another clause. So we will bid it for three. We'll be able to address it to ensure that it meets all appropriate guidance as well as conforms to the ordinance.
Mr. Russell.
Was, was this amendment drawn up by our law director and, or his department or his assignees? Did that, did the, is that where our ordinances come from? So that they draw them up and they, they kind of review the legalities of them? Is it, I mean, that's what I thought. And so I would assume that if, if, if it's in front of me here as an amendment, that the law director has opined on it and said, this will, this will do what we want and, and, or, or am I mistaken? Does, do these things just get created and Don or his department never see them?
I'm...
I guess that's a question for, to, to Rob or to Don.
Yes, I see them. Yes, I create them. Yes, we follow them.
Thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
I love that you said we follow them. So the ordinance tells the mayor what she can and cannot do. So it says she can do a three-year agreement. It doesn't say she can do a three-year agreement and say, eh, we're going to do one year and we're going to go ahead and develop that property. So if you're telling me you're 100% and they're fine, great. That's all I asked for in the beginning. So you're telling me you opined as our law director and you are 100% sure, correct, Don?
I don't know what, I don't know what you want me to opine about. You've got, already got somebody to walk out because he's not in, he's not in my firm. So please don't mention that. So... Mr. Wobser.
I'd make a motion that we add on to Councilman Russell's amendment to give the administration the, the ability to put in a one-year out clause on any properties that they seem fit. Period.
Mr. Baumann. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Point of, point of order. Are we, is, so...
Yeah.
Do I need to give approval to his amendment? Are we, are we voting on the, his change to my amendment? Or can I just agree to that and then we vote on, on the whole thing as, as one? I'm, I'm not sure what we're voting on.
I gotta see where we're at.
So I, I made a move, motion to amend ordinance 2023-081.
Gotcha.
And Jeff made a motion, seconded by Bra, by Brian, to amend my amendment.
Yeah, you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but I think you can, in your amendment that you made, you can add this language to that amendment, and we don't have to do it twice.
And I can do that by saying, I accept the amendment, and if it's, and if it's seconded by the person who...
Right.
So I will, so then I would, I will accept that amendment? And, and who seconded my motion to amend?
Baumann.
Mr. Baumann. Do you accept, do you second the amendment as discussed?
I do, sir. So now, so now we are doing, so now we are voting on 2023-081 as amended with the additional verbiage that Jeff proposed, or that Jeff proposed. Thank you.
Okay. So all those in favor of the amendment as discussed, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wobser.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Wobser. It's been a long night, I'm sorry. Was that a, what was that, Mr. Wobser?
He said aye.
Denise, okay. Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
That's it.
The ordinance is amended.
That was really bad.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of 2023-081 as amended.
Second, Mr. Greenow, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
The ordinance is adopted.
As amended.
As amended.
What? We just did that. Okay. Third reading for ordinance 2023-82, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Slough.
I move for adoption of ordinance 2023-082.
Second, Mr. Greenow, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance 2023-84, an ordinance amending Chapter 1100 et cetera codified ordinances of the city of Finley, Ohio, known as the zoning code. By rezoning the following described property referred to as 200 West Lincoln Street rezoned, which previously was owned, R3 Small Lot Residential to C3 Downtown Commercial.
Next.
Second reading for ordinance 2023-87, an ordinance declaring the practice of engine braking, otherwise known as jake braking, to be prohibited within the corporate limits of the city of Finley and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Jeremy or Rob, did the traffic commission discuss this on Monday? And if so, can you, can you share with me what they, if they came to a conclusion or a suggestion or a recommendation?
So the traffic commission did in fact meet on this and had a discussion around this, and we are, the recommendation was to, you'll have the minutes in the next council meeting, but the recommendation was to move forward with utilizing the engine brake or jake brake process in and around our city. Jeremy is going to be following the national standards, traffic standards, and we'll actually have an evaluation of where those signs should be, and we'll be moving forward if council with the recommendation of the minutes, passes next council.
Mr. Russell.
Jeremy, would that signage also, does ODOT get involved for I-75? Or does this apply to I-75?
So, so no, it, it doesn't really apply to I-75 on that, but since like 224 going through town or 12 and all that kind of stuff, with, since that is in with our municipality, they follow within our, or our jurisdictions, they follow our rules on that. So if we implement, say, a jake brake law on that, then ODOT would be honoring that. Now, the signs and all that kind of stuff, we would have to install them, and we have to maintain them and all that kind of stuff. But they have the same agreements for county and townships too. If county and townships want to have them, ODOT says, hey, as long as you have an ordinance or resolution saying that you guys are good with it, we're good with it too.
Mr. Russell.
I'm specifically wondering about the exit ramps of State Route 15 at Western Avenue. I know that, I believe that is a location that I can hear from where I live on the other side of Donnell, and, and that would be an occasion where I would, I would think that truckers might be jake braking. So I just wondered if you, if we would, if we would put like signage there.
We'll, we'll consult with ODOT. I mean, we're not the first town to do this type thing. So we'll consult with ODOT where we have to place the signs, that's through the Ohio Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. But we'll have, we'll have to follow those, but we will consult with ODOT because they'll have to know that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Wobser.
Jeremy, be sure to include some costs for signage, anything else that might be involved in this in your next update.
Yeah, and we can do that, and we're actually, we can make those type of signs in-house. So, you know, it's, it's still going to have a cost, correct? But, you know, that's a benefit of having that sign shop.
Ms. Frishy.
Just for the record, jake braking, you know, when these semis are carrying 80,000 pounds or more and they have to stop quickly, jake brake happens. I'd rather have it happen and us be safe. I feel like this is similar to the 25 miles per hour on Tiffin Avenue coming off of Main or Center, we'll call it.
Ms. Mayor.
I would just note that the ordinance specifically addresses that people will not be ticketed for using jake brake in emergency situations.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Wasn't this ordinance originally for noise? Or wasn't there stipulation about cruise night, things like that?
Ms. Mayor.
No, the ordinance specifically is just referencing jake braking. My letter did mention noise pollution and some of the concerns that we've heard from residents on various parts of our community. In the, in the letter, I did mention noise pollution as an item that we're trying to pay attention to, recognizing that we have had events. I would like to, since you brought it up, on the cruise night, nights, there's no intention of getting rid of those, but I think there is an opportunity to try to work with the informal organizers to try to decrease some of the noise because it is being disruptive to some of the neighborhoods as well as the downtown businesses at times. So we all want, we want everybody to be able to come down and have a great time, but I think we can also be considerate of everybody involved.
Mr. Russell.
Well, to, to the cruise nights and as a resident on South Main, I'll kind of echo what Randy mentioned two weeks ago. Those, the cruise nights, the, in my view, the, the drivers and the participants are very respectful. They, they end at a reasonable hour. Usually it's between nine and 10. Obviously, you can't stop one stray car, but I, we find those, I know my wife and I find those events wonderful to watch and, and, but I, I understand that there's nothing in this ordinance that we are looking to do anything that would affect in any manner cruise nights or the ability to have them, participate in them, et cetera.
Ms. Frishy.
I know, I think Grant kind of touched on it a little bit. I would be more interested in addressing the properties out on the south end of town that back into 75 is that Western Avenue, they had originally tried working with ODOT to put up a noise wall barrier, and it didn't happen, and a couple of years it's gone by, and it sounds like there's still concern about noise from 75. I think we would be better suited addressing something like that than trying to police who jake brakes and who doesn't, and if it's warranted. But that could have definitely helped those property owners out on the south end.
Ms. Mayor.
So I have been in communication with a couple of the neighbors in that area. If you recall, back in 2016, when that work was being done, the neighborhood actually did a informal petition that was circulate, I guess it was a formal petition through ODOT, and they actually voted it down. We have been in touch with some of that neighborhood. Obviously, the cost is significant to out an actual noise, sound wall. There are a number of residents that don't want that because of impeding their views across, but we have talked about that perhaps being an opportunity to plant some trees, especially near the school. near the school. I know the school has reached out to us. That is something we are looking at is alternative methods that would not be as obtrusive as a noise wall, but would also provide some sound buffer. So we can, we can do both things.
Mr. Niemeyer?
And we just got the letter and the ordinance was created last meeting. So wouldn't this be the first reading, not the second reading?
Ask the clerk or Ms. Mayor.
The letter and ordinance were both provided on the last meeting. However, it was, it was given its first reading and then council requested that it also be considered a traffic commission. So we did have that as well. So this is a second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Second reading for ordinance 2023-88. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Second reading for ordinance 2023-89. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Second reading for ordinance 2023-90. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio to enter into contracts for the installation of a separate sanitary line to allow for a dedicated sanitary and storm sewer for the City of Findlay's Maple Grove.
Jeremy, I'm assuming this is something that we probably want to try to get done before winter kicks in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Greenow.
I'll make a motion then that we give this its third reading. Suspend the rules and give it its third reading.
Gotcha. Second, Mr. Ballman. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance 2023-90.
Mr. Hellman?
I've got a quick question. If, if there is sanitary water suspected, there's sanitary water, not sanitary water, storm water leaking into the sanitary system, isn't there a way to test that, throw some dye in there or something to see whether or not that's happening before you dig it all up and start re, maybe you've done that.
Yeah, so since, since this letter was generated on that, through our flow monitoring efforts, we have suspected it, but we have clarified it with that there are cross connections of storm into the sanitary.
Since this was written.
Since this was, but you know, our, our consultant and all that even said like, we're pretty sure this is, but we have done dye testing to ensure that the storm is in that sanitary.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of 2020, ordinance 2023-090.
Second, Mr. Hellman, now discussion. Sorry, Mr. Hellman, you were...
I was out of line?
Yeah, a little bit. I'm getting flexible, sort of. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser? Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance 2023-91. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio to enter into contracts with Helms &amp; Sons Excavating Incorporated for a replacement water line on Laurel Lane, appropriating funds there too and declaring an emergency. Second reading for ordinance 2023-96. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio to enter into contracts with Kirk Brothers Construction Incorporated for the replacement of CO2 tanks at the City of Findlay's water treatment plant, project number 35790800, appropriating funds there too and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greenow?
I want to go to Jeremy again on this one. Is this something that we need to get moving forward?
I mean, one of the biggest aspects of this is long lead time on the materials for it. So the sooner that we can get the money approved for this, the sooner we can get the materials. It's not like you're going to keep buckets in the ground. It's, it's going to be mainly getting the materials moving.
Mr. Greenow?
Move that we suspend the rules and give this ordinance its third reading?
Second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Abstain.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Russell?
Aye.
I'm confused. We only had one abstain and one... Okay. Sorry. First reading for ordinance 2023-97. An ordinance establishing job classifications, pay ranges, salary schedules, and other matters that may affect pay for all non-elected officers and employees of the City of Findlay, Ohio, and repealing ordinance number 202281, ordinance 202212, and ordinance 202336, all in, and all other ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2023-98. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
For the conversations with Jeremy earlier so that we can continue with our street maintenance, doing the add-on streets and additional alleys, move the council statutory rules be suspended and ordinance 2023-098 be given its third reading, or second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Slough. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose nay.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Russell?
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2023-98. Ordinance 2023-98.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of ordinance 2023-098.
Second, Mr. Greenow, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose nay.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Old business. Ms. Frishy?
I don't know if it's old or new. I'm just looking for clarification on the site location for sheets. Is it on 99th, on the street of 99 facing out?
Who are you directing the question to?
Mayor's right there.
Oh, mayor, I'm sorry.
I need a longer arm, Inspector Gadget arm.
There you go.
It is on County Road 212, just north. It is to the east of Lowe's Distribution Center. So it is south of Township Road 99 and just north of County Road 212. It has been inaccurately reported.
I just wanted to make sure because...
Other old business, new business? Well, let's see. From council first, none? All right, Mr. Stashak, we'll let you go first.
Real quick, thank you for all those who attended the pre-budget meeting tonight. It's important that we continue to do that. It was great discussion. I appreciated the engagement. I've been getting in the last two weeks, a number of community citizens telling me their calls are not being returned by council members that they're contacting. I don't want to single any individuals out, but it's more than one. It's not all, but more than one. I reached out to one myself a couple of days ago and did not get a recall, a return call, and that's pretty much been the practice from this individual as well. I guess what I would suggest is that you're aware of it and to maybe double check with the clerk that you have the right numbers on what numbers are being given out, whether, because I know a lot of you have a second phone for your council business, so you can kind of keep that on the side. And then based on that, make sure the public knows, even if it's a message that maybe you don't have the opportunity to return all calls quickly or whatever, but they're frustrated. They're very frustrated. Those six were six different individuals, and it started with the McVanus thing, and they were people I would not have expected not to get a call back.
Ms. Mayor?
So just a couple of quick items. One, we are having with the, with the change in temperature that we're seeing, we're seeing a little bit of odor in the water at different places around town. Our team has already adjusted for that.